Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting of Wednesday, June 1st, 2016. Can I have the roll call, please?
Dan Carey.
President.
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Salem Derby. Jennifer Hayes.
Yeah.
JP Gazinski.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Cameron Smith.
Yeah.
Joy Winnie.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, a motion for the approval of minutes of May 18th.
Second.
We have a motion, a second approval of minutes, May 18th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain. Any extensions? None seen. Communications for elected officials, boards.
Keep it public.
Oh. If anyone here from the public who would like to address the council from something other than what's on our public hearings, please, it's your opportunity now. Come to the podium, state your name. Don't see any. Okay. Communications for elected official boards and committees and correspondents. We have none at this point. Mayor Communications, Mayor Kadger.
Just briefly, because I know you have a lot on your agenda tonight with your public hearings, I just wanted to bring to the attention that even though we've hired many people in the last few weeks, in the last month, I know the councilors are interested that we have hired a city engineer. He started on May 23rd. His name is Michael McManus. And we've also hired an ECA-plus coordinator who started Tuesday, the day after Memorial Day, and her name is Julia Roscher. So, it's posted on Facebook under East Hampton City Arts, but just, I thought you might be interested in those two positions, but honestly, we've had several positions. We've hired special police officers, dispatchers, you know, quite a, you know, it's a summer program, camps, you name it. So, it's a busy time of year, but I thought you might be interested in those two.
Okay. Reports of staying in committees, finance, Councilor Rist.
Yes, Mr. President. We have the review of the budget today, reminding us that the July meeting of public hearing is set for the stipends for elected officials, which have been previously submitted. Our next meeting will be the 22nd of this month, where we'll talk about the new business, the CPA request, and I would like to go to new business and do a first reading of that request. Request is hereby made for approval of following appropriation amount requested $8,000. To be appropriated from the CPA reversed reserved fund for affordable housing. To be appropriated to Affordable Housing Stove Top Fire Suppressors Housing Authority, $8,000. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose: to fund the purchase and installation of stove top fire suppressors in all dwelling units managed by the East Hampton Housing Authority. I hereby move that that be sent to the Finance Committee for approval.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to send a supplemental appropriation of $8,000 to finance. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
That concludes, Mr. President.
Are you scheduling a public hearing?
Do I have a public hearing for that?
I apologize. Thank you. Thank God, we have a fantastic, up-to-date Council Clerk. I would like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the July meeting for the supplemental appropriation from the CPI here to forementioned.
Second.
Anyway, a motion, a second to set a public hearing for July 6th, 6:15 in these chambers on the supplemental appropriation of $8,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
That concludes.
That concludes. Okay. Public Safety, Councilor Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met yesterday. We made great strides on the Street Acceptance Protocol. We're getting very close to having it reformatted enough to go back to the Planning Department. I'd like to request a 90-day extension on the agenda item.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second for a 90-day extension for the traffic rule, I mean...
Street Acceptance.
Street Acceptance Protocol. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again?
We are also...
Okay, all, motion passes. Sorry.
We are also continuing to look at the on-street parking on a section of Pleasant Street, and I would also like to request a 90-day extension on that agenda item as well.
Okay, a motion, a second for a 90-day extension on the traffic, on the parking on Pleasant Street. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Thus concludes.
Okay. Appointments, Councilor Smith.
Okay, the Appointments Committee met earlier tonight to review three mayoral appointments. The first one that I am bringing forth for consideration by the full council is Angela Zemmorrelli. She is applying for the position of ECA-plus Grants Committee with a term expiration of So, Angela has experience in artistic grants world, both from receiving grants and also from being on a Grants Committee, and her application was approved 3 to 0 at the Subcommittee medal level. So, I'll make a motion to move her name forth to the full committee for consideration.
Second.
Okay.
So, a motion, a second to accept Angela Zemmorrelli, ECA Grants Committee, expiration date 12/31/18. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
The second appointment for consideration is Raymond Redfern for a second term serving on the Licensing Board with a term expiration of 6/6/22. Is the mayor still here? Would you mind speaking to Raymond Redfern's application since this is a longer application for being six years?
Because they're required by state law. Licensing Board, you'll notice the expiration dates are different, too. It's the second Monday, or the first Monday in June after it expires. The Licensing Board is under Mass. General Laws, so it has different regulations, and Mr. Redfern has been on our Licensing Board for quite a while. He expressed an interest in being reappointed. He also used to be an investigator with the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, so he has a lot of information on the Licensing Board.
You're very welcome.
So, our Subcommittee had approved Raymond Redfern, 3 to 0, for this position at the Licensing Board, so I would make a motion to move his name forth to the full committee, to the City Council.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to accept Raymond Redfern, the Licensing Board, with a term expiration of 6/6/22. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Okay, and our third appointment for consideration by the full council tonight is Donald Meltzer, who has applied as a position on the Nashuanic Pond Committee with a term expiration of 12/31/18. And Donald moved recently to the city of East Hampton, has a background in biology, and has attended the last few meetings of the Pond Committee to verify that this was a committee that he felt he could serve and would be interested in its content. So, the Subcommittee voted 3 to 0 to move his name forward to the full City Council, so I'd like to make a motion at this point for the full City Council to consider Donald Meltzer for the position of Nashuanic Pond Committee member with an expiration date of 12/31/18.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second to accept the term of Donald Meltzer to the Nashuanic Pond Committee, term expiration 12/31/18. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Okay, and I have three new names, well, not necessarily new, but three orders of new business, to move to Subcommittee for Consideration. The first appointment is Barbara Lombombard, who has the clerk to the City Council with a term expiration of August 31st, 2018. The second is for Valerie Bernier for the City Auditor position with an expiration date of September 1st, 2019. And finally, Hetal Patel for the Assistant City Auditor with a term expiration of September 1st, 2019.
Second.
So, we have a motion, a second to send to Appointment Subcommittee Barbara Lombombard, Valerie Bernier, and Hetal Patel to appointments for further investigation. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain. Motion passes.
And our next committee meeting will be on July 6th at 5:30 downstairs, and thus concludes.
Thank you. Ordinance, sorry, is there someone from ordinance here? I know the Council Derby couldn't make it tonight. That could give us, Councilor Smith?
Sure. Okay, the ordinance Subcommittee met this past week to consider the ordinance restricting single-use plastic bags. It was a really good meeting. We had a lot of attendance. At least 20 people from the public showed up to give an opinion, and at this point, we are going to be putting together an informational, educational forum to discuss all the different options within the bag restrictions and what that means, what the terminology means, and what the latest science is for each of the approaches, and what the pros and cons would be. And ultimately, we'll compare that with the needs of the community. So far, we've had a lot of different opinions given, and we're really trying to create an exhaustive list of the opinions on both sides of this issue, so we can address them all in our final decision. So, appreciate the participation of the general public in this, and as soon as we have our next meeting date established, we will be making announcements so that further involvement can be had.
If I may just add for that?
Yeah.
We have been getting calls on this subject, and I assume you do appreciate the public involvement, so keep those calls coming as we discuss this issue for the future. And I think it's a very deliberative process that when a decision is made, we'll be able to bring it to the council, having made full deliberation.
Right. Thank you. And that concludes, I assume?
No, actually, I would like to create, I would like to request an extension of 60 days for the request to consider creating food truck ordinance.
Second. Okay, well, a motion, a second for a 60-day extension for the creation of food truck ordinance. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
And since this is a very slow and deliberate process with the plastic bags, I think it would be safe to also ask for an extension of 60 days on that as well.
You can do 90 if you want.
90 days.
Exactly. Okay, a motion, a second for a 90-day extension for the single-use plastic bags. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Okay, thus concludes ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Property, Councilor Gazinski.
The Property Committee has just been presented with an easement request for 2 Culldaff Street in exchange for some property and a utility line, and the committee will meet to discuss that on June 16th at noon here in the Municipal Building. We need to send it to committee.
Concludes the report, I'm sorry.
We need to send it to committee. Oh, we will consider this if the council agrees. So, I make a motion to move this to committee. Thank you.
Okay. Motion, a second to move committee the request for the easement on 2 Culldaff Street. Additional questions or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Mr. President, I move we open the public hearings.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to open the public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. Councilor Rist.
Okay, this will be a little lengthy, but necessary. I wanted to comment first on the budget. Having been presented, a balanced budget, which does bring back, which is a wonderful budget in that it not only funds most departments to what they needed, but also actually increases the budget in order to bring back a number of employees that have been laid off. For the first time, I think, since 2008, our budget didn't shrink, and I congratulate the mayor, the finance director, and all the department heads who worked tirelessly to find out what is actually needed in a realistic budget. I also wanted to comment, because we don't actually approve revenue, but when you see a balanced budget and you look at it and you hear about new people being brought back, you wonder if a pot of gold has been discovered in our budget, and that's not the case. It's just a combination of many small increases and careful budgeting by the departments. We have a small increase in cherry sheet money, Chapter 70 money, the usual 2.5% increase in property tax. As everybody knows, we're only allowed to increase property taxes 2.5%, but we have a lot of property, so that increase does allow the mayor to use that to fund these new positions. I would like the mayor to come forward before we go into each area and comment, as she would.
Thank you, Councilor Rist. First of all, I'd like to thank the councilors, the Finance Subcommittee, Dan Rist, Dan Carey, and Peg Coniff, for the three public hearings for going over the budget. I think it went really smooth. It was nice to see our City Council President, Joe McCoy, there for all three of the Finance Subcommittee meetings. So, but, you know, the budget is actually, you know, one of the most single, most important documents of the city. It's how we operate. That's how we operate all year. It's our operating budget. So, I thought you might want a little bit of feedback as to how, you know, how it comes about. So, it's not a simple process. It starts in December. Memos are sent out to each and every one of our departments with forms for them to present, you know, put together their funding requests for their personnel and also for their expenses. All of those requests come to my office. My assistant, Nikki, then enters them into the KVS system, enters into all the amounts, and in the meantime, the, you know, the revenues are calculated by, Melissa works with our tax collector, our auditor, the assessor's office, in calculating all what the revenues are, and those and those are entered. So, after that, my assistant makes an appointment with every single department. So, I meet along with Melissa with every department to go over their budget requests, and we go line item by line, very similar to, you know, what the Finance Subcommittee did. And after everything is entered, it then becomes the really difficult part. So, the decisions as to where the cuts are, are mine. I stand behind them, and the decisions of what's funded are mine. So, in past years, and thank you for referring to, you know, you hear some talk about this wonderful windfall, no such thing. So, what happens is, this is my third budget. So, in the last two years, we've been doing a lot of, I think, you know, exceptional financial planning. We have reorganized, we have restructured, we have amazing collaboration with all the departments, and just starting with the, just starting with the school department, with the superintendent and myself, it's a lot of collaboration, and we are at a point now where nobody, there is no department fending against each department. We're one city, we're one employer, and we all work together for the betterment of the community. So, this year, I was extremely pleased through all different, you know, like I said, different cuts that we've made in the past, regionalizations, reorganizations, moving positions from one place to another. So, the requests that I received from the school department was achievable, and it, so I'm more than pleased that, for the first time in many, many, many years, and Nancy and I can't remember quite how many, I was able to honor their exact request. And part of that is because it was reasonable and achievable. So, again, this is many years of collaborating together and working together, and as far as all the other, you know, cuts in departments, I'm just going to touch on this briefly, because I know, Councilor Rist, you're going to, you know, go through each section of our budget, but, and I think Nancy is probably going to want to speak as to, instead of for once having cuts in our schools, we're adding 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 positions, Nancy, and, you know, and I'll let her get into the details, but extremely excited about that. Also, on the city side, I'll be adding a firefighter, a police officer, a dispatcher, a person in the highway, a person in the water department, and, oh, and also in our Council on Aging, senior centers, we're extending our services. So, through the, again, having a new van, again, great financial planning, receiving grants, we have extended our van services, so we have two drivers, one full-time, one part-time. We are going to be extending our services, we've now extended them to North Hampton, out of the city, and also, we are going to be probably maybe mid-July extending our hours of operation for the COA. They're looking at, Linda, our director, would like to be open on Saturday mornings. So, it's going to be a trial basis, starting mid. So, this, to me, is more than pleasing. So, as we go through it, if there is absolutely positively any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, moving on, the first...
I have a question.
I apologize.
Mayor, there's a question from Councilor Hayes.
So, thank you for the introduction. I'm wondering why a lot of that information wasn't put into your budget message at the beginning.
Actually, it was put into the budget message. If you read through it, it tells you basically, what the budget message is, is it's a summary on top of the entire budget, and it tells you exactly, you know, it's an overview of it. So, I think that is very, to me, it's very clear, and this is why that we have the, you know, it's a summary of this. So, this is why we have all of this in there, and I think we've been very, we couldn't be more transparent if we tried. It's in PDF form, the entire budget is on the website, and we're more than pleased. And there have been a couple of people that have wanted the printed version, and, you know, some people like to use the, their laptops, the computer, or have it printed, and again, it's always available, my office, City Clerk's office, and the library, but also on the website.
So, just to finish the question. The budget message that you have is very similar to the past three budget messages.
No, that's not true. That's absolutely not true. If you look in this, it is not very similar. Some parts of it are similar, because the budget itself is an annual budget. So, when you look through it, like this, for instance, "Through our cost-saving measures and efforts to restructure and consolidate," it's my pleasure to announce that this budget will be the first in more than seven years that will provide for the replacement of crucial personnel and police fire DPW, which will begin to address our critical staffing levels. This is also the first budget in many, many years that appropriates the exact funding request received from the school department, which is actually what I just repeated a little earlier on, but I'm happy to repeat it again.
So, that's different from the budget message that's on the PDF, then?
No, it's not. No, it's not. It's the exact same thing. It's the very top sheet of the PDF. It's called Mayor's Fiscal 2017 Budget Message. It's in front of the, anybody that has a book, it's the first page. Anybody that has a computer, it is the first page. It's exactly what I just said. I hope that, any other questions, Councilor Hayes?
I did. What's, I had a question about just the budgets overall, because it's my fault, I did not go to those financial meetings. I was far too busy. Did we pursue any new sources of revenue, and what do you think are, like, the top three sources of revenue for East Hampton?
The, well, I think we already covered that, but the revenue is basically what we receive, you know, from the state, our, and we, Councilor Rist actually already covered that, too. Our 2.5, our Chapter 70, like, we receive the cherry sheet every year, which has, and we're using the House budget, starts with the governor's budget, and then the House came out, and that's the latest we have right now. So, the revenues are exactly that, and I think I just explained that, where the, all the officers, all the offices work together, as to, you know, what our new growth will be through the assessor's office, what are, you know, what we'll receive through our taxes, and, you know, and assessors, and all those departments work together with the finance department, and revenues are entered along, you know, with the appropriation requests.
Okay. So, just two more questions.
Take your time.
I was wondering if anybody from the public had commented about the proposed budget here.
Well, actually, the media, I'm sorry. Actually, the media had covered the budget message, because that was, you know, sent out as you got it, and so did the media, and we received many, many favorable comments on it, and, but that was exactly why I was glad that Councilor Rist brought up about, this is no windfall. This is three years of extreme, you know, financial planning and frugal, and by cutting expenses, using the funds for critical, essential personnel services, which you'll see here today. And that's why you'll see the departments here tonight representing their budget, so that their request is that the councilors respectfully do not decrease the budget, because can't increase it, but you can make cuts to it.
So, the final question is comparing this budget to the other couple of years, and I took the last 24 hours, and I wish I could have had more time.
I wish you were at the Finance Subcommittee meetings.
I know, I know. That's definitely, definitely on me.
There were a lot of good questions covered.
So, the last column from our prior budgets is a variance to recommend stage, which could do a percentage increase or decrease from the prior budget, and that column is missing from the fiscal year 17.
That's correct. What this budget is, this budget is in PDF form, and this is the way you requested it, so this is how it's on there. It has the exact amounts from year to year, so if you wanted to do the percentages, I'm sure you can calculate.
Oh, yeah, no, I did some of the arithmetic, but I looked at, like, seven or eight city budgets across Massachusetts and reached out to some other people, and that's a column that's typically in a budget. It shows the percentage increase and decrease from the prior year.
Our budget shows the exact numbers from the previous years to the current year.
It does, yes.
Yes, it does.
And then typically, in years prior, you've had the variance from the recommended, so it's kind of easy to see, like, wow, there's a 10% increase here, or a 15% decrease here, and it's a little bit easier to parse it out than having to do the arithmetic on each of the line items.
I think it's pretty obvious what the increases and decreases is. When you're having exact numbers, to me, that is very obvious, you know, what the increase is and what it was from last year.
And I can see that it probably would be easier for you, is this is something that you've worked with a lot?
No, I said it's exact. They're exact numbers.
And there's also, like...
Do you have any other questions, Councilor Hayes? I think we covered that one. Did you have any other questions? I think I've covered that one.
Fine. It just would have been nice if we could have gotten the budget that had those variances in it.
And it would have been nice if you attended the Finance Subcommittee, that we had three of that, were very lengthy and went line item by line them, and you could have asked every single one of your questions there. That's why your Finance Subcommittee has them.
Councilor Rist.
I just wanted to comment that percentage increases were not requested in this budget, and it was not necessary for this counselor, nor the Finance Committee, at any one of our meetings. Was there any request for that? And I don't find it necessary. It is easy for me to see, looking at the budget summary, where an increase was and where a decrease was. It's simple mathematics. Even though it's 2 million or 3 million, it's still simple mathematics, and I disagree with the counselor's criticism, and I'm making that a comment. I'd like to go now into general government. Just a couple highlights, I'm sorry, Mayor Kadger, you're going to have to come up, and if there's any questions, because general government is under your department for the most part. Highlights are, the City Council would, should be happy to note that our budget increase that we requested for the Council Clerk and the council as a whole was approved by the mayor, so the Council Clerk will get a little increase after many years having not had an increase in her salary. The assessor's office, I wanted to compliment the restructuring that was done in that office, which helped save money, a great deal of money, and also made it more efficient, and I'm happy with the principal assessor in how that happened. I have no other comments except to say that this budget was carefully done, and it was pretty much, if you look at the full increase, I'm sorry, at the final summary of general government, the request, the recommended stage was slightly less than the requested, and... and it's considerably less than the adjusted 2016 budget, which is where we saved money. A lot of that is efficiency. If there's any questions of the council for the Finance Department, Finance Committee, or for the Finance Director of the Mayor on this budget?
Section one, or we're talking about?
Section one, general government. That's what I'm talking about, yes. Anybody? Do you want to make any extra comments on general government? You don't have to, I just asked if you want to. No? Okay, all right. If there's no, does anyone from the public have any comments on general government budget as presented by the mayor? If not, I'll make a motion. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,631,438.37 for the various departments listed under Section One General Government, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations, with the following amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor and the Finance Subcommittee for Water Enterprise, $50,595.88, and Sewer Enterprise, $54,914.86.
Second.
Motion second. Motion second for the approval of Section One General Government. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Staying? Motion. One abstention. Okay, moving on to Section Two, Public Safety.
As the mayor mentioned, under Public Safety, we have a new position in the Police Department. The dispatch area has been increased. Fire Department is hoping for a federal grant that will give us a new position, and that's why the increases are as they are in that area. I'd like to ask if Captain of the Police, Captain Alberti, or the Chief of Fire Department would like to make any comments, or they're here for any questions by the department. You want to make any comments?
We're attacking you.
Okay, that's okay.
So, both of us are pretty good with our budget. The one we want to address is the Public Safety Dispatch budget, which probably, percentage-wise, has the largest increase because it's such a small budget. Very soon, the way 911 calls are answered in the Commonwealth are going to change. Currently, if you dial 911 for your cell phone in this area, it's sent to State Police Troop B in North Hampton. They figure out where it is, they send to that community. Normally, after two or three calls, they realize it's for the same place, they stop sending them. In the very near future, the State Police is no longer going to be getting those calls. Through GPS technology in your cell phones and towers, they determine you're in East Hampton, all of your cell phone calls are going to be going to East Hampton. Give you an example of fire, last week on Clark Street, our dispatch received 12 landline 911 calls and two ringed down from State Police. State took over 20 cell phone calls in that fire. In the future, that, all those dump in East Hampton. With the exception of the day shifts, we only have one dispatcher on duty to answer business lines, 911 calls, police traffic, and fire traffic. I think we did some rough math, was over 50,000 emergency?
Yeah, it was all of that, yeah.
Yeah, at least 50,000 emergency calls per year between police and fire coming to that dispatch center.
Typically, way, answered by one person. I can tell you countless stories where the one dispatch in there is running police cruisers, fire apparatus, and the ambulance isn't completely overwhelmed. Just last week, on at least three occasions, there was also a line at the window, people trying to make contact with our dispatch. So, they're just completely overwhelmed in there. We recognize the need. Lauren Milky, who's our dispatch supervisor, does an amazing job with what she has, she's doing a lot more with a lot less, so providing her relief with another dispatcher. And the time, the scheduling that we're going to do with that is going to be in our, statistically, our busiest time, and that'll really be at Lauren's discretion to plug that person in. It just, she's over, that office is completely overwhelmed. We saw the need, and we wanted to address it, and thankfully, with the mayor's budget, we're able to provide some relief in there.
The other thing they face, through a state mandate, if you call 911 with a medical emergency, they just can't say, we'll send an ambulance. They're mandated to do its call, emergency medical dispatching. They have a tablet in front of them, based on the type of call, they have to go through, ask questions, provide feedback, could be as detailed as providing CPR instructions over the phone. That dispatcher, once they start, cannot stop and answer another call. So, if we get a call for a heart attack, and you have a police officer pulling somebody over, asking for a plate to be run, which, as we saw in Auburn, isn't just a routine stop anymore, there could be a delay there. So, we're playing roulette with that position, and as we see all across this country, it's not, never in our favor. So, by Lauren asking for the additional person and the mayor funding it, I think it's going to fill a gap that's been there since 1998, when we created civilian dispatchers.
And Councilor Riss had a question at the Subcommittee. Can we put a policeman or a fireman in there to help relieve the pressures when things are busy? The reality of that is, we're actually on the street addressing, you know, the community's needs at those times of sometimes disastrous consequences. And we have, for us, the police, we have our CEGIS, which is in there, which is all Corey, and the firemen aren't Corey-approved, so they can't run plates for us. And then, of course, you don't want us trying to do a EMD over the phone to somebody that's in need of help. We're not trained for it.
Okay, Councilor Riss, simply?
Councilor Riss first, I'm sorry.
With the new positions we hope to get, especially in the Fire Department and the one you're getting, I know I talked about overtime, and I know there's a large figure for overtime, and I also know that you responded at the Finance Committee meetings, that some of that is required, because, for instance, you have to put a police officer for roadwork or anything all the time, and that's overtime. And in the Fire Department, you just don't know when you're going to have a large call, but hopefully, with, if that new position comes in, we could keep that overtime down. And I just wanted to make that comment, I don't know if I've stated it properly, but it helps.
My biggest cost for overtime is not fulfilling for fires, it's filling shifts to maintain five firefighters in the station, which, you look at the number of calls we do annually, which goes up with five firefighters in the station, I can tell you, so far in '16, I've done more ambulance calls than I normally do, which, thank God for the public, I'm only driving, I'm not in the back. By adding, getting all four groups back to six, it significantly reduces overtime, providing, I don't have the injuries and illnesses that pop up every year. In theory, it works. As you had asked before, the only way to really impact overtime would be to increase shift staffing to seven, which in year one is a $400,000 increase. So, spend $400,000 to save 185, I don't think that's worth it, but bringing all four groups back to six will have an impact on staffing overtime.
From our, from our side of the house, it's a little different in that we don't have a minimum manning. We have kind of an unwritten minimum manning that we try to run, at least four officers a shift, but more often than not, I'm leaving shifts open on my midnight shift if guys take off. I'll run three on a midnight shift, which is certainly problematic and has been, and a lot of times, we're wanting to calling guys in to help out with different situations. The position that we're requesting is, it's very similar to the dispatch, only in that my detectives are completely overwhelmed. And we had four detectives at one point, and we're down to two now. I cannot, I could invite all the councilors to come up and visit our detective bureau, and you can see on the wall all the caseload that they have. The biggest problem for me is I don't get a lot of proactivity back into the community with my detectives by way of a lot of different tactics and things that they can do that we just can't get out there and do, primarily because everything that they're doing is completely reactive. 100% of what my two detectives are overwhelmed is mostly reactive. The amount of cybercrime that they're dealing with now is unprecedented in my career, I think in most of, all my guys' careers. The Internet crime is on the rise. We're doing child exploitation more now than we've ever done. We're working with the U.S. Attorney's Office. Federal Court, we have, like, five cases, I think, now in federal court, individual cases on child exploitation. So, we're just completely overwhelmed in my detective bureau, and so, when my detectives take time off, if they get called in, that's overtime. But if they get, when I put them in there, so if we, if we get this detective, and we put three detectives in there, when the detective takes time off, I don't have to backfill him, I don't have to backfill his shift, so there's no overtime accrued when my detectives take time off.
Thank you. JP, did you have a question?
Just thinking about the dispatch situation, with the number of calls you're talking about, and the multiple calls at any given time, it's just overwhelming. I, it seems like it's impossible for one person to deal with, or any, just not enough, not enough people. And I wondered if technology could help us in any way, just something to consider. Let's say, I don't know if you know exactly where the call's coming from, if you pinpoint a street, or it pinpoints a tower, does it tell you?
It GPS's, and I've seen it as close as nine meters to where the cell phone's coming from.
To where, okay, so pretty close.
Depends on the carrier. Yeah, it depends on, some carriers, you'll only get the cell tower, but other carriers, we do GPS phone pings all the time on missing persons, on suicidal persons, so you can narrow the score.
Now, I don't know, if you have 20 calls coming in, and they're all reporting, or almost all of them are reporting the same information, if there's any way that the system can be tweaked to send a text message to each of the cell phones that's calling in that says something like, I'm not saying we have the technology.
Right, right.
But the thought is, you know, text message, "East Hampton Fire and Police are dispatching a cruiser and an ambulance to this location, a fire truck and a cruiser," something that then the person goes, "Oh gee, okay, well, I'll hang up and not report that information."
If dispatch gets inundated, gets inundated, where they can't answer enough calls, after so many rings, it dumps to our backup. Our backup is the town of Hadley, and we're there. So, if dispatch is getting inundated with 911 calls, they'll start dumping into Hadley, and Hadley Dispatch, after one or two calls that are for East Hampton, will probably figure out that, you know, East Hampton's got something going on, we're not going to transfer anymore, but they still all come in to us until then.
And the problem that I would foresee with something like that would be that one call, and then everybody that isn't related to that, and then you're going to assume that liability, or we, you know, we --
I'm not saying not answer the call, I'm saying send a text message that says we're responding to this address with a fire truck and whatever, whatever the equipment is being sent. Now, it may be that the person has additional information, something else to, or it could be a different type of call, but it didn't, I mean, I know I'd hang up the phone if I were reporting something, and you said, "Oh, you're already responding to it?" Great, I don't need to report that. On another question, if I may, with regard to the call firefighters, could you update us, the whole full council and the public, as to where we stand? Because I know having call firefighters as a backup, folks that are in training, and bringing them in to fill in as a sixth person on a shift can be economically a viable system. I know other communities have done it. Could you update us as to where we stand?
Currently, we are at four call firefighters, they're all still going through their upgrade training. The problem is, we've been, had so many retirements, that I don't think for the last four years, I've been to the magic number of five that I want to get at. Every time I get there, somebody retires. I'm looking at the possibility of two retirements next fiscal year, so it's a constant revolving cycle, but they do, when they do come in by collective bargain agreement, if a firefighter takes a personal day and it causes overtime, a call firefighter is offered that position first. Call firefighters get a whopping $15 an hour, so it's a significant savings over the overtime Right now, none of the call firefighters that are left are paramedics, they're all finishing their paramedic training, so we're limited as to when we could use them. Once they get their paramedic certification, then they can go into any shift, regardless of what the staffing is, but right now, they can only work as part of the minimum staffing when there is ample number of paramedics for the day.
I just would encourage you to do everything you can along those lines, to increase those numbers in whatever way you can, and I'm sure you're thinking about that all the time.
All the time.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, Mayor?
And just, just to reiterate on a couple of things regarding the overtime, again, without a crystal ball, injuries, there's no planning for them, we always hope we don't have any, but it just takes, you know, 111F injuries can knock your budget right out of the water. I think the councilors have seen that this year, where before we came to you with the transfer for overtime, we had a plan in place, which was putting a person on. I hope that you're also, I know most of you are aware, that we also have, we hire from our call firefighters and our special police officers. So, we, every time those two departments get low, we are constantly adding to them. And again, those are positions I was just talking about earlier, which, you know, they're working on now. I think it's also important to know, again, back to windfalls, if you look at these budgets, if you look at the Public Safety budgets, you know, police-fire in particular, you'll see that I'm increasing, you know, putting on a firefighter and putting on a police officer, but you'll also see that these budgets have been cut in their expenses. So, they, these essential services come at a price, and I cannot commend, you know, our public safety, the police and fire, more by how many times they have reorganized, redid their budgets, you know, whatever is submitted to them is how they provide the essential services to East Hampton. And I, for one, think that our police and fire are second to none, and I think most communities would agree that our departments are extraordinary, and what they do for what they have is still impressive to me.
Thank you. Is anyone from the public who would like to comment concerning the Public Safety budget? Section two?
I didn't.
Okay, Councilor Riss?
I'll make a motion. Section two, Public Safety, I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,203,276.63 for the various departments listed under Section two Public Safety, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations as recommended by the mayor and the Finance Subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, motion second for the Section two Public Safety budget of $5,203,276.63. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion? One abstention. Motion passes.
Section three, Schools, I just wanted to compliment Superintendent of Schools and the mayor for working very hard. I thank the Police Department for coming.
Thank you very much.
And the Fire Department. Anyway, complimenting the Superintendent of Schools and the mayor because they worked very carefully. One of the things I wanted the councilors who weren't at the Finance Committee meetings to know is that I am impressed with the fact that they've, the School Department decided to hire a full-time business manager, which I believe strongly helped them to understand their budget, added, as they, as quoting them, clarity and transparency to the budget. And to me, the old system of a once-a-week business manager was difficult for this novice to understand when you're dealing with 16, 17 million dollar budgets. So, I'm happy that that restructuring has worked, and I think that added to the fact that you've been able to do these, this budget, and the mayor's been able to support it. So, I'd like to turn it over to the Superintendent of Schools, to Mayor's first. Mayor's first, okay.
And I know that our superintendent has to leave because she's extremely busy, too, and needs to get to another meeting, but I did want to comment on that, but that was one of the restructurings we mentioned, by restructuring our whole payroll department and moving somebody out of the School Department into the city form of government, into our Treasurer's Office, into our payroll department. For streamlining purposes, that allowed for the opening of a full-time position for the School Business Director.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, and my apologies, but it is awards night at the high school tonight, and at 7 o'clock, and I'm supposed to give some of the first awards, so I'm going to make this quick. You know, everything that's been said here this evening is true, it was a collaboration of my leadership team, they worked very hard with me to craft this essential services budget and to look for every economy. It was certainly the collaboration with the mayor that enabled us to restructure so that a payroll position was taken out of the School Department, transferred to the City Department, which enabled us to hire the full-time Director of Business Services. And she certainly has been a tremendous asset to us. It's something that I have wanted to do, and we just didn't feel that with all the cuts we were making to staffing, that we were able to hire a business director.